Excuse.
Uh six o'clock, we'll call the meeting of orders, uh first order of business is the question of what?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the minutes of January. Second portion of the second, uh, day of special moments. They've done, or as a paper.
Just a big problem over here, the line, oh, you turn.
Yeah, my, right, and it keeps coming back. I still have to fill it a couple of times. Well, wow, that.
That is deep.
Yeah, that will talk your dentures out.
Sure, where the pivot point is, I think, for the tractor trailers when they go around that, the tire, the trailer tires.
Gotta be.
When it swings, I think it should.
I know like a cloud touches pavement when my tire goes in.
Oh, it's bad, yeah.
Yeah.
Make sure I go slow and go around it.
It's just not like a Google.
Yeah, you'll take out the front end.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing I had is I had got one email about the, uh, vote to do away with the write-in votes on then, I don't know, I think you guys might have gotten the same email. I just, I got it today, that they were happy that there was, wasn't enough time, they felt that there wasn't enough time to make an informed decision, and they think it's, incumbents just trying to tame the system is what it kind of sounded like. So I said, I'd make sure I brought it forward.
Do we know?
It's, it's been brought forward.
Okay, really? Uh, okay.
I, I got.
Okay, all right, we did. Uh, and no, nothing for me.
Okay. Um, I received a resident inquiry about requiring members of boards and committees to be residents of Lord's Park. Uh, right now, it's technicality. Most people think that that's a rule anyway. It's, well, that's only for school board and for, um, select board, but all, you can be from anywhere beyond any other board committee. So, um, anyway, it came to me, seemed kind of reasonable. Um, and their position was relatively justified. So I've reached out to other managers across the state to see how their communities are managing this. Um, if they are at all, if statute allows you to. So, um, I'll follow up on that and keep you guys posted if there's anything there that might be of interest. Uh, next Tuesday, I had to go to Augusta, follow up on the penalties, assess them to the labor inspection. So that's an effective way to create those down. I'm not sure if it's going to be worthwhile, but I told them if it wasn't, then please don't waste time. So, um, they scheduled me an appointment anyway. So that'll be Tuesday. Um, absentee ballots, you can request them, but they're not available, uh, until the second, the first full week of February. And then we're going to be closing at noon on Friday, this Friday, we'll close at noon, um, so that all staff can go to lunch for Joe Bishop's retirement, Foreman at Public Works, he retired on the thirty first. Skip finally arrived, so we're going to do that. So if you're any boards or committees have worked with public works, in public works, vendor, or anything else, you're invited to come to the fire station for twelve thirty on Friday. Um, planning board meeting, that's regular, TIP committee will meet next Tuesday at five o'clock. They have, uh, they're going to do a preliminary review of the survey for economic development opportunities. They're also going to have a presentation on revolving loan funds. Uh, and a potential opportunity, uh, for TIP funds there. Last week, we received our final post fee check for twenty twenty-three from Waste Management. That was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is, uh, low for what we usually get. Uh, your automatic foreclosure date on real estate taxes from twenty twenty-one is still February the fourth. Library trustees are meeting a week early, that's tomorrow at three thirty. They also had an event, uh, on Saturday at ten thirty with, um, both artists, um, off the band artists, two separate, uh, folks that will be at the library. They are something different. Uh, kickoff meeting last week with Red dot funding, it's the company that, uh, is suddenly leasing us the kayak, the paddleboard unit. Um, so things are on crack there. I've still got to get them a bunch of information, but it's all just background administrative stuff, and that is working. Um, forward, uh, received notice from the insurance company late this afternoon that our claim for the building usable park has been approved, and they're going to cover the class of replacement. The improvements, the electrical office, I said, um, as well, the contents less than a thousand dollar deductible, so that's good news. I reached out to Jeremy Turner today about the replacement, uh, and he is going to sell us the replacement at cost, which is what that insurance will give us. And then they're also going to move the damaged building from there to public works and then install a new one there, so that we can just make use of that as, uh, you know, not the same as intended to. Uh, tomorrow's the meeting, the civic ready, that, those are the folks that, uh, mass text alert system, so that should be step one. I don't know exactly how long it's going to take them to roll it out, but obviously, once they open up, uh, the opportunity for us, um, then it's a matter of collective numbers. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, talking with, we have the two engineering firms, one on Farah, one on Sandy River. Sandy River is dear ago because they did the previous project that we did out there in a similar section fourteen years ago, and it's held up. So the board voted two, three years ago to bring them back for that project. Anyway, they recommended that we pull that together with Farah. And issue one set of specs, one bid pack, uh, that should provide us with a cost savings in the contract, or being able to have what they think is one super to oversee both projects. Um, into the general economies of scale savings there. So, um, they're moving forward with that, and I've got a, instead of calling them possibly tomorrow, uh, maybe Friday, if not for us next week, we'll keep posting on that. Uh, the road committee met, actually, they have your last meeting and asked about Wilder Hill. Um, and that's a project that just needs to be done and committed to that last year. So we've sent out to engineering any of the review work that we had done as a part of the fire department. Proposed fire department, uh, up there that never happened, and then we had some additional survey work on this year, but was under a thousand dollars to update everything that was there. And really, the road committee thinks, uh, that for a second and third glance, that probably shifting that road to the right as you go in, um, is the easiest, most effective solution as opposed to doing a kind of underdrain work, easements and whatnot. So.
Uh, take the trees?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ditch both sides?
That's right. That's kind of what I thought, and that would be the easiest and cheapest way to do it, but it came in really late, another year. Uh, it was a time when the cemetery road, it's probably better traffic road than, yeah, Wilder Hill itself, and understandably so, so, um. They've got an eye on that, and we've, we've sent everything over to Justine already to, to have her work on the, uh, design and whatnot, but we need to get the key with that. For better, it's not going to be cost effective. And then the other project that's up in the air with public works is the bombasie bro crossing that we had a hundred thousand dollars in grant funding for. Saint Germain did the, um, design. And grant application for us upfront, and then we ended up paying for the design work afterward. Um, so that was put out a bit last year. Sergeant was the only bidder at seven hundred thousand.
Right.
And it was budgeted to be one fifty to two hundred. So we're going to rebid that out. Uh, to say that they've been disconnected is probably an understatement. Uh, but they did the design work, and I'm not willing to let them pivot off of that, uh, because that's why you have it. So, uh, I've kind of twisted some arms today, and they're going to see the project through time and materials, and we should be bidding that out of the due date middle of February. So, that's where we are.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Well, ready, we focus on January seventeenth, general warrant number twenty-four.
I need to go through general warrant number twenty-four in the amount of thirty-nine thousand twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second question, the second, uh, any further discussion?
Do we get anything back from mainly docs? Is there, does that come back to us with other funds or something? I mean, the docs are twenty-four thousand, like.
Mainly docs is a second half of the payment, uh, from tip, or the, the slim dog.
Okay, so that was like a tip thing, I was, okay, I just wanted.
I think standard check.
All right, three times.
Oh, okay. Uh, any further? See none, all those are paid. To everybody? Discussion action on January seventeenth, general warrant?
Why, I have two.
Uh, sorry, so you have a general warrant, twenty-three, that twenty-four, that was for last year's bills?
Okay.
Like, yeah, now, that's why.
Little one, too.
And then this one is for twenty twenty-four expenses.
Yes, this is general warrant number one for twenty twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Second, off the same, uh, discussion on that? See none, all those are paid. Discussion action on January seventeenth, general warrant?
I hope to approve the airport warrant in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Vote from the second, any discussion? See none, all paid. That's everybody. Uh-huh. Discussion action on January seventeenth, uh, souvenir.
I hope to approve the sewer payment in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Second, go for the second, further discussion? All paid. Uh, public comment? And I'll find that, uh, so, uh, public hearing on proposed expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act funds to purchase fire gear.
We have anything here, our package of this, or we just?
Uh, you should, you and I have a memo.
Number eleven.
Yeah, you should have a memo. And I forwarded it to you yesterday morning from the chief. And I will just turn it over to him.
You know, it was telling this place, right? It's okay, but I, so, believe it or not, in twenty twenty-one, we, I, I sat here and we asked for ARPA funds, it was very late in twenty twenty-one, asked for ARPA funds for buying general members, uh, twenty sets of fire gear, right? Uh, and, and at the time, actually, when our funds were first went out there, there was a fairly loose, but there was, there was a set of rules that, now, those have since been all taken away, I think, but, but at the time, under a certain rule, which had to do with firefighter PPE, et cetera, you know, we asked you for twenty sets of fire gear, and it was, we asked for sixty-nine thousand, you said yes, that was a good use because we have to buy that fire gear anyway, so it was a good use of our funds. So we did that, and we, we wrote the purchase order, um, just prior to the end of the year in twenty twenty-one, and we actually only spent only, uh, but sixty-five thousand, two seventy-two. So we didn't quite get to the sixty-nine. Uh, so then, um, so fast forward a little bit more than two years, two years and a couple of months. And so we've had four people leave the department, some of which are, um, in the process of returning. So I don't want to give anybody's gear away that may be returning. And I also don't want to talk about any, um, you know, specifics on that, if I can help it. Uh, but we've also had four people join the department. And I did list those names, and one of them happens to be a full-time, uh, town employee, by the way, first one. And, you know, the personalized nature of, of fire turnout gear is, there's a size and a fit and a cut element to that, right? A size of the person and, and person's measurements and male, female, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'd like to buy four additional sets of turnout gear for the four people there that have joined the department. And of course, the price has gone up. And if you remember, we sat here in late twenty-one and said, if I can order this prior to one-one-twenty-three, we can save eight percent, and we did, by the way. But it went up, and it went up, and it went up, it's gone, I think, three price increases since then. So instead of the per, these numbers are a little bit easier to understand. Instead of the thirty-two, sixty-three per firefighter, uh, today's probably twenty twenty-four's price, just want to go back, forty-two eighty per firefighter. It's fairly significant, twenty, I don't know, twenty, thirty percent, whatever it is, we can do math for it, but, I mean, that, it's forty-two eighty, now, I think that's inclusive of everything, right? The, the boots, the gloves, and, you know, the whole, the whole shoot match. Um, so four sets of gear for seventeen, uh, one twenty. Uh, and, you know, I, I expected some return, returnees, uh, those that don't return, you know, that gear is available for the next person in line with a similar cut and fit, right? Um, you know, the nature of fire gears, we're gonna have to buy. Uh, whether it's one out of each, each year for the next fifteen years, which is what we've been doing, we had the opportunity with ARPA before, and we jumped on it. I'm asking, you've got some additional ARPA funds that we could get caught up to current with that, and, um, just one last point, uh, which I think is kind of important, uh, personally, I think it's important. The boots are actually made in Auburn, made in Old Sposh, and Auburn made. Globe, which is a worldwide fire boot manufacturer, uh, manufactures these in Auburn, man, so that's cool. And the, the turnout gear, the fellows pants, et cetera, uh, right over in New Hampshire, and, uh, what's the town? Pittsfield, New Hampshire. Which I think that's pretty interesting. Um, so that's the reverse, and I, I put at the bottom of the memo, I put a bunch of references if you want to go back. I've just, I always sense I have problems with it all. Did I leave anything out, or anybody?
No, I think you covered pretty good. The only question I have, uh, and I know the answer, but for public's sake, how would you rate the overall turnout rate for these four individuals that you're asking for? Better than me?
Well, that is better. That was the second fault, and I'm just going to add to that, of the sixteen that are left from the original twenty. Are there any that aren't active at all that?
Yeah, like, can they just leave their stuck there? I mean, if someone's like an average.
And I, I don't, and I don't want to push people, I know we struggle, every town struggles to get firefighters.
So, yeah, there are some who who don't come as often as others, absolutely. Um, but the last thing we use is them to come in every year.
No, no, I, I agree, just, I know, we did the same thing in the law enforcement side, we've got people that haven't worked a shift for us and stay on the reserve.
Maybe a reserve officer, and, and they, they, they don't cover a shift for a year. Okay, maybe it's time to start thinking about what we do with their gun.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's the only thing.
We do have, I would have said two individuals, but now I'm going to say one because of a recent development, that hasn't come for a while. Though maybe a further development later in the year of, of, exactly what we're talking. I'm not ready to make that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it was just something we haven't. Not ready to start cutting.
Yeah, no, 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 I get it.
It's just, we need someone who wears gear, right? I don't want you sweating like I sweat.
I get it.
And then I, so I was glad that we got new gear, uh, because we used to wear gear for a long time, uh. Yeah.
Right, and, and I think to what you were asking, Richard, and I had the same question, John, is, out of the new four new ones, what do we expect?
Oh.
Of them, four.
Richard asked the question, and I didn't actually get the answer. So the turnout rate for those particular, the first three that I've mentioned, very good. Um, the, the last one, we're not even really completely finished on board yet. Um, the last one is actually the son of our new deputy chief and department administrator. He's a brand new full-time firefighter, and Scott, he just turned eighteen. Lives on Rebecca Street. I expect his turnout rate will be high, but he's not working, like, everybody else, when they're not working, right? So, uh, uh, very good. Um, if that answers the question. And one of them, the top one, Robert, is, um, a full-time, uh, public works employee, so he's here and in town, and, and if the, you know what, it's the fan, uh, I can make a phone call to Richard or to, um, Rodney and, and get him if I need him. So it's going to be used, for sure.
Well, you know, the, the ones who we're not sure they're coming back, like, should we know if we're getting that equipment back for buying new stuff? That, because it is so, I mean, like, the thousand dollars more than it was when we bought them just two years ago, we got twenty of them to do another four. I mean, like, if we only need to get two, I'd rather buy two, because there's a lot of things that we're kind of giving our ARPA money for. Um, I just want to make sure that we're not surplusing if we don't need to, if there's stuff that can be put back into the, rotate over.
What, what other type of things do these funds get used for? Like, what, give me more background on them?
Yeah.
So the funds came to the town, uh, about three hundred and forty thousand, uh, with restriction. It came in totally, and so we received it, it was eligible for certain things. Cleanest and easiest way for administration to handle the money was to write it all off as lost revenue, which we were able to do, and it was one form filing, and then one finalized and be done with. So that took all of the restrictions off of this pool of funds.
Mm-hmm.
Across the board, no restrictions. But the board at the time made that commitment when we drummed it off as law revenue, that we were going to continue to expend the money in the spirit of that it was granting for. So you talk about outdoor recreation, um, health and well-being, and public safety.
Public safety. And I think we were the first ones with our hand up for the money, and maybe the first one or three, I, I think you were, yeah. And, and what were some of the other expenditures? I think that was.
Yours are big, so they're easy to remember. I'm, I'm not sure of the other ones, uh.
What's left in that?
More than half. So you're looking at probably two hundred thousand. Uh, this was the pool of money that the voters had authorized the expense for the purchase of the property for the food pantry, and that never went through. Um, the grain, she believed, did come out of this. Yes, it did. That fifty thousand dollars from the grain, and.
Thank you, by the way.
Like, uh, the work that was done.
Right, same there.
Like, the work that was done.
The exterior work the town gave fifty thousand dollar rate. Um, almost there.
There was a bunch of ideas that were kicked around, not sure which ones.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the, one of the things that we had was this money came in with certain restrictions, but they didn't have restrictions, and a lot of the projects that, um, came, that people wanted ARPA money for, so it was like a tip, so the select board went.
Yes.
And swept them all to tip, most of them to tip, and then the TIP committee.
Fire department had three, uh, ten, that question. We had three, and two of them got kicked to tip, so.
Yeah, so the premium pay that came out of here, that was, you know, a differential, I think we did a thousand dollars, full, full-time equivalent, something to that effect. Um.
Did we do, uh, the surveillance footage out of here? First of all, is that still slated to come out of here?
No, it's already been extended.
And it was, and it was out of here, though, right? Or did we?
Says it.
It did.
It did.
It came to death.
Well, yeah, right.
I mean, it's very little, let me see if I've got it.
Well, this was like our first list of ideas that came, or proposals that came in.
Didn't count. Just being able to propose budgets for some of the different departments, whether it's going to go through or not, like.
See, this is, you know, that means all.
The vast departments ask a bunch of stuff that might get no back, the red department from like, slash, that the budget hit, I just, I think that for the, for us, that we've got a, we've got a lot of stuff that.
Did we do this one year?
No, uh.
So these aren't like, people ask for this?
People had asked for it.
Yeah.
But, like, the months?
Yes.
No, because we've systemed to.
Use it.
Yeah. Everything was funded.
Oh, okay, cool.
Yeah.
It's a matter of whether or not.
But some things, TIP can afford, and some things are going to pay for.
Yeah, so, yes, because we got other rates of funding in, based on what it does.
Right, because of certain things that TIP can do or can't do.
And certainly, maximizing what we could do with the amount of money we had.
What was the cargo trailer for?
Uh, still, so like, uh, the emergency.
Moving all this, like, voting and.
Right, with the cots and stuff.
Right, I never got purchased.
Right.
That, turned down the, um, repeater equipment that got paid for, but that came for.
Tip, correct.
We got the washer thing, too.
Oh, it was washer.
Have you seen the whole list of hers?
Both, the most.
Came from tip, but that's not an expense.
Correct, and then they approved.
Did we do an open cluster?
Pardon?
Library open cluster?
No, because the library said they didn't want it, and then obviously, Rec was hesitant with it.
Yeah.
Because of the space it was going to take up.
Yeah, and like, same with ice skating rink, it just wasn't feasible to maintain it.
Right, we had the school, we're going to have to pay for the ice skating rink.
Excellent idea, just to hold, it's not the volunteer base to make it happen.
The bleachers were purchased, but those came out of tip.
Yeah.
And the grains from parking lot, building leaves, all that, that just took form into grain.
That's so right, we, we still have a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy in this.
Is, is. Are all ARPA things still overseen by TIP?
ARPA is overseen by this board.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have to come, the authorization from ARPA was this. Before you could expend money, it came in from ARPA, we are having a public hearing. So that's, we're in a public hearing, so, uh, so the people can kind of, you know, support, oppose, neither, um, about it, and then the board votes whether or not they want to extend. But I know I have a tabulation somewhere, and I'm trying to think of where it is, but.
I can't tell you for sure that the only fire expense, I don't have approval for this, the car item.
So we paid for the survey at Ashland Park. The initial survey out of this was three thou, not for exceed three thousand dollars. Um, the fencing improvements, we made a bunch of fencing improvements at the ball fields, that was fifteen thousand. Premium pay for employees was twenty-two thousand for everybody. And the total that we had saved was a hundred and fifty-five thousand, approximately a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
And we had had conversations.
Two years later.
Emergency, like, responsive, like, we're talking about the cots and different things like that, like the signage and all that other kind of stuff, too. So, I mean, I don't know what we're.
So we have about a hundred and eighty-five thousand in the account still. Uh, we're going to talk about funding opportunities for that as well later. Um, but no, I don't disagree, because what we're funding up to later might purchase the entire gap. But this was kind of where I was looking in terms of the initial funding, but we've got a grant coming from Somerset County for twenty thousand, hopefully was approved this afternoon, that can be earmarked for the trailer or shelter expenses. I've got twenty-five cots in the basement. I went to county last, sent to county last week for cots, because they may have taken back. And I may have got them and told them it wasn't sending them back. So I have those in the basement now, and.
Yeah.
It is, and I had a meeting with a couple of folks that were very involved in the shelter operations, and we're going to start to loop other people in on that to get a broader perspective.
Yeah.
But.
The only thing that I'm a little bit worried about is, when we keep spending this money, is that we did sort of earmark, we had a public hearing for the food pantry, and we've kind of put that aside, say, if four months from now, an opportunity came up and like, an ideal property came up, and we'd spend that money, we, that we already said that we would spend towards that, like, it doesn't make sense to have it sit there, but it also, like, we already kind of wouldn't have, like, I just feel like we're kind of in this, like, this.
So it's time, it really is, right? We killed everything on our list, though, that was originally brought to us for, uh, this money. Uh, and I think we allotted up to a hundred thousand for the food pantry, or that's what the voters had allotted, if you will, uh.
So that's still there.
So it is still there, uh, and with some other things pressing, I mean, on this, or some, you know what I mean, I, I wouldn't want to buy gear that we may or may not need, if you will, uh. If there was something else here that was, you know, I mean, worthy of the money or the expenditure, and I, I feel a kind, well, I'm a little bit biased here, as well, I'm not receiving these, but I do wear new gear, uh. But, yeah, even given the sixty-five, that's still going to leave us with a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand, uh, of really money with no destination, which isn't a bad thing, uh, but covers us on the food pantry, should that come to light, or any other funding, you know, opportunities that we have for something else. I can come back and ask for more, I don't know, yeah.
No, you got, right, I mean, yeah, and then that's the thing, that's the thing.
That is.
So anytime someone new comes on, a new volunteer, is it, it's always a lease of, like, now, like, forty-three hundred, like, you have to find new stuff every single time someone comes in, or?
Well, I. No, most of us started, most of us, including the four names that you see there, started in old gear.
Yes.
Right? And if you decide that, hey, they're going to stay, and, and there, there's a, there's an element of of, I think you used the word fairness, but in the spirit of treating everybody the same, the funding is there. And I got, I got four people, you know, wearing older stuff, and that means I have four other people who don't have adequate backup gear, that's right, right?
Are they even wearing the new boots?
So some, somebody.
No, right, they're wearing rubber.
So there's a rubber boots.
That is, uh.
There's four, there's four unnamed people, I don't even know the names, might be you and me, Matt, that don't have backup gear over there right now, because these four people are wearing it. And it, it feels like in the spirit of ARPA, when, when actually initially with the restrictions that were on it, and, and, you know, who is the pandemic affecting, and there was no department affected anymore than the public safeties, the, the police, the fire, et cetera, right? So we, we thought it was a good use then, we still think it's a good use of the money now. It's two and a half years later, and there's half the money still sitting there. And I got four members, so it, it all adds up to why, why I'm sitting here.
But when you say that, like, what, I don't.
Uh, so my, my old gear says, so, uh, should I show up at a structure fire and get my gear, so, uh, my backup gear would come on while that stops being cleaned? You could have blood all over it, I mean, I don't want to be gory, but there's, I mean, any number of scenes that happen to that gear.
So like, basically, every person has two sets of, or no?
That, that was part of the initial goal, yes.
Okay.
Uh, and to the ex, it's generally been realized, except the four people right now, they don't, because there are people that are wearing backup gear. Matt and mine, I have backup gear, I don't know whose it is, but, uh, because I didn't, I didn't look that far into it. I, I, I do have a list of the twenty sets of gear and where they are right now. I did not bring a list of the twenty backup sets. So, that was.
Well, there's a big, there's a big difference, too. So like, uh, my old gear is rubber boots, hard bottom, rubber boots.
So it's a, well, this is a big, this is a big difference too. So like uh my old gear is rubber boots, hard bottom, rubber boots that are the most awful things you've ever put on your feet. Uh, the old gear is somebody that was before me, you know what I mean, that came, that gear was probably. As old as me, even older, and that's what I wore for the first ten years being in the department, uh, and after. Being in the new stuff, I, I, my God, I couldn't imagine going back to the uh the glow boots that he mentioned. It's lighter, they're more like a sneaker, uh. Unringed, the new gear has the harness in the back, so should have one of the bigger gentlemen, or myself, become entangled, probably you can grab them by that thing on their back and pull them up. Uh, I don't know when the safety standards run out on the old gear, I'm sure there's a number or a time there.
Sounds.
Uh, but yeah, yeah, I it's. It is a luxury, if you will, I I guess you do have to call it that, to have nice gear, uh. Yeah.
It's it's a luxury that a lot of towns our size can't afford.
Yes, right.
I think that's, that's fair. Right, we've. We we went a hundred percent of the way two years ago.
That's right.
And and looking back at it two years later, now we've got four. More to finish the swing, if you will, and it feels like the right thing to do, and that's why I'm sitting here.
I would make a motion, but I can't, cause we're still in. A public hearing.
You're on it today, I should look at you guys. Right, uh, yeah, so really, uh. Is there anything else anybody wants to add or stay before we close?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's good.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing. Uh. And we'll move right into the uh discussion action on proposed expenditure.
I make a motion to approve the proposed expenditure up to the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred twenty thousand dollars. From our ARPA funds, also in APRA.
I thought.
ARPA, no, is that a type of?
Oh, could be.
So there's more than second, do you need further discussion on that? See, none, all's a favor. Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, public hearing on March fourth, representative, all references, questions. Right, so as of right now, there are two referendums questions the board has uh elected to put on the ballot to be voted with the candidates. The first one. Here uh in pursuit of statute, shall the town vote begun under twenty-one, verse six nine six two C and section seventy-two dot A, pending the votes for write-in candidates in municipal elections. Beginning with the twenty twenty-five annual election, will be counted only if that candidate has filed a timely declaration of writing candidacy with the municipal clerk. So right out of the gate, the agenda set twenty twenty-three annual elects, so.
That was confused, that's one question, I think, good.
And so that's been incorrectly listed, it's already noted in your minutes. Um, what this does is, I think it. Proposes giving more validity to the nomination process. So folks that don't wanna circulate papers and get those twenty-five signatures, um, you know. You can just go and write somebody in, I guess, and you can be there. Uh, I I I'm indifferent to the broth up, it came about from an administrative perspective. Um. One side of it, because you get all these write-ins and. What does it amount to? Now, I think it's important right out of the gate to say, if there's nobody run, so we have a handful of seats right now, we've got sewer. Commission, we've got school board. And folks have not taken papers out for any of that, so even if this passed. Write-in votes will still be counted on vacant seats. But if there's one seat open for the library, somebody went through that process of filling out papers. If you didn't declare your writing candidacy and you get written in, those votes would not be counted under this rule.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is. Eh. Some folks, I think the perception could be that it's an overreach or that it's disenfranchised voters. Uh, towns, some towns are the only ones that operate into this. You you're not gonna vote for state senator or state rep or governor or any other level of office. Uh, those are already covered under this, where you declare your um. Where you declare your write-in candidacy, uh, so. From an administrative perspective, it enhances efficiencies, because it would exclude folks in certain races, uh, but. The other side of it is that, you know, if there was something last minute that somebody wanted to write in for, uh, it would. You know, obviously hinder that, it would keep a seat vacant theoretically, um. If there was a unique circumstance that somebody would grow in that nomination window. Uh, that, that's rare circumstance, but could also happen. So. I've heard comments on it for both sides, I understand and appreciate all that. So that kind of the overview, there is a sheet here, and we'll have it available at the town office for folks if they wanna stop by and pick it up. It was produced by another community. Um, and reviewed by the secretary of state's office, just to kind of outline where it is. The top half is really kind of how it looks for, or how it would look for North Department, and the bottom half explains the process. Uh, is it this with the state folks instead of with the clerk registering, they would, uh, they register at the state level, the secretary of state's office. I'm gonna take questions.
And what comments from the public?
Oh, really? Fire away, Tim, please. The two great reasons to enact this would be, you put the time in to run around and collect twenty-five signatures, that's a lot of effort. Unless you have a big family. The other thing is. You know, our municipal clerks are at the ballots way too late at night, counting Mickey Mouse's, Donald Trump's. Bill Clinton's. It's ridiculous. But I'm against this, okay? Um, for a couple of reasons, and and the first question, if I can ask a question, is. There'll only be counted that candidate has filed a timely declaration, so in your minds, what were you thinking a timely declaration would be? The secretary of state says seventy days. Before the election and state elections.
It's sixty.
So it aligns with the nomination process.
Okay, all right. And that's not, we don't have the discrepancy to form that or et cetera.
So the concerns I have. Number one, we've had a few situations where someone takes out papers, they run, but they kind of like, eh, I don't really want it, I get forced into it, I hope I don't win. But you get five people on the ballot, and then you have another person who does a write-in. I spent nine years here, my first year was as a write-in, although there was a vacant swap, so this wouldn't apply in that situation, but. I could see a situation where that might happen. I don't think we have a huge turnout at the election. As far as really weighing down the process for the municipal clerks who are counting these ballots, although it is. Arduous and timely. Logistically or or formally, I've got. Thirty-eight, twenty-five, oh, one. And I'm reading down through this, clerk to perform duties, uh, qualifications. Number three, determining and counting write-in votes, a municipality may choose the method of determining and writing or counting write-in votes. According to the subsection, once a municipality has voted to accept the option under this subsection, the option applies to all municipal elections until municipal offices hold a public hearing. Two, rescind that order. So under A, which is what we would be going under, after the municipal offices hold a public hearing. That means ninety days prior to the election of candidates by secret ballot. So now that this is twenty-five, not twenty-three, that will alleviate that problem. If you're looking a year and a half out. Uh, the legislative body of a municipality may vote to be governed by the provisions of twenty-one A, section six nine six two C. So if you look at. Sorry. If you look at twenty-one A. Six nine six two C, you. Challenge is effective or valid for doing ballots. Invalid vote is six ninety-six two, and then C. If a voter marks a write-in indicator for an office, but does not write the name of the declared write-in candidate in the blank space provided next to the write-in indicator. That vote for that office may not be counted unless the termination of choice under a different statute is made. So I don't know if the reviser missed this, cause this is the sectional law that it states. If you go down to D and then you go to E, so it would be six nine six two E. If a voter writes in a write-in space, the name of a person who has not filed a declaration of writing candidacy as provided under seven twenty-two A. The vote for that office may not be counted, so I think. You might wanna have someone look at that on the legal aspect.
Right, it hasn't gone to legal.
That's fine.
Yeah.
No, so I think that's a, but that's the reviser's office quotes that statute, but it doesn't point you with the right statute. So that's my first issue. Um. The date clarification is okay, and then the second part of that. Uh, this thirty A, seven twenty-two A, and seven twenty-two A is a nice little short one. Says to be considered a declared write-in candidate, a person must file a declaration of write-in candidacy with the secretary of state. On a form approved by the secretary of state on or before five P M on the seventieth day. Prior to the election, the candidate must meet all other qualifications at office. So seven twenty-two A really points you towards the secretary of state's office in a statewide election. And I'm sure that we could do the same thing here, but both of those references that I see in this question. Both six nine six two C and seven twenty-two A. I mean, I think they're a little bit misleading, deceiving, wrong, I don't know what you'd call it, but um. I'm confused at best.
By the.
Wasn't, by the language, okay.
It's kind of like if you didn't turn in paper and you decide you want to be considered for it, within seventy days before the election happens, you have to say, I wanna be part of it, right? Is that, I mean.
Sixty.
Sixty, so we're up to be sixty, he said seventy just then, like, I don't think that's necessarily confusing. The only, the only issue that I have with this is. Generally, we don't get that many people put their papers in for stuff, and like, sometimes we have people that, there there's. Openings, we have no one even on there, but sometimes we have an opening and there's only one person, and what happens, you look at that, you're like, eh, no. I'm not voting for that person, for whatever reason, then you have no opportunity to like put someone else in. That's the only thing that I have. Well, we, if we consistently had plenty of people putting in. I don't think that I would have any issue with this whatsoever, but sometimes we do have the um. The tendency to see the exact same names that were in our organ on every board. You'll see one, two, three, or five different things, and everything from Stu or the library to this, that, it's like you'll see the same name and you're like. I really wanna see that person in that spot, and if we can't write someone else in who we think would do a better job, we're kind of stuck with. That one person who, and it's not necessarily because they put in so much time, they have four pieces of paper that they think people sign at the same time, so. That's my only thing with that one, um, is not giving any additional choices when there's only one person there.
With having to file. Big word as a right one. It gets you on the ballot, or you're allowed, because it's gonna be a list, from what I read.
That's correct.
That they know those people have filed to be a write-in candidate. Versus. Which will be held here. I'm assuming.
You'll be on the list posted here, cause this is asked devoting, and then this was posted to the sample ballots.
So it would be there, versus going through the ballot and just writing in Mickey Mouse, not knowing if Mickey Mouse is even interested. And because you could go through this whole process of allowing the write-ins and have. Joe Smith get. The top number of votes, and Joe Smith say, I don't want anything to do with this, even though the people want me to, I don't wanna do it. So at least with the write-in candidates, we know that they're interested.
And that happened two years ago, with this board. There was a writing campaign on somebody's behalf. Which. By perception disenfranchised the second place vote getter who did want it. And yet nobody got it because. And we ended up holding a special election, because the first place declined and it doesn't default.
Um, it doesn't feel, we can point someone to, so it's not like it doesn't get, I mean. That, it's.
If you want, and you can remove this, right?
Well, that's, and that's where we're at. So like, we're having the public hearing, is this so like people can talk about it before they vote, or so we can. Decide if we wanna alter anything before it's like on a ballot, or we're deciding if we want it or not at this point. Okay.
You, yeah, right now, the votes that is standing is is on there as a question of our recommendation.
But we can still.
It's not a big recommendation, because it is the ball.
But we can still remove it off of the ballot if we decide, okay. Um, so I would love if you have any other points, I would want, whatever you were just reading.
Yeah.
And then would wanna talk about it at our next, do we have to make a special meeting then? Okay, or could we add it, add it, or just pull it, okay?
I appreciate your time, thank you. I just, for me, small town, we don't have, you know, we know everybody who votes at the polls, they're our neighbors, they're our friends, we work with them. Um. I don't think this has gotten to a level where this is so onerous or so, so timely, um. That it inhibits our ability at this point. I would, I would encourage, if that's an option, you to just pull it from the ballot for now. That can be my recommendation, and that counts, appreciate it.
Todd, go ahead.
I, I agree with Jim in that it's too bad to pay a bunch of good people to sit there and count Mickey Mouse's, I I I think that's a shame. Um, however. I think this. Has written, and as Jim has stated. And it doesn't matter if it's sixty or seventy days, the problem I see with it is, it doesn't account for life. And in life, things change, right? Whether somebody has a death in the family, or a divorce, or, um, you know. Any one of the fifty things I could list, things change, and. I might decide forty days before an election, then geez, I really think I'd like to run for a select court seat. Because I just had this big life change, and you know what, I'm reevaluating, and well, I missed the timeline and I can't handle it. Right, so I I think the sixty or seventy days, either one, I don't think. Or somebody the opportunity to adjust. Because of a change in their life circumstance. Like, and you see it on a national level where, you know, so-and-so died and his, his or her spouse is, is running to fill the seat to fulfill their dream, but. It it could be something like that, or it could be just somebody deciding a little bit too late. Um. So I I think. I think let the people vote. Unfortunately, you have to deal with some Mickey Mouse's.
And I wouldn't have a specific issue with it, if if you wanted to save the time of your employees. You know, before polls close, twenty-four hours before polls close, if you wanna indicate that you're writing candidate. That's gonna save them time, that's what you're really looking for, that's gonna save them time, and it's not gonna be so impactful for people who. You know, have the situation that Todd mentioned.
Right, so is there any state statute that limits how far in advance? Or is it that they have to declare?
My understanding has fallen on what it is, okay, but once this closes, then I recommend that you pull the question. Uh, but then I'm also gonna recommend that come June, when we get back to vote again, that you consider moving your town meeting. Because. My staff is gonna be at the polling place on Monday morning. Six o'clock. And they'll be locked me on town meeting night till eight by twelve or twelve thirty. My staff will be there by six thirty the next morning to do it all over again. And they'll be there, right? So I'm gonna. In view, I'm gonna ask you to consider moving our annual town meeting from a Monday. Because that Monday now conflicts with the state election.
Why, we just got on the same night as the state election.
Because polling hours are different.
Okay.
It's it's, it's a local thing.
And ours traditionally has always been, I don't even know why, but it's always.
But they.
Like, why?
It's now Super Tuesday, so it's starting to come to a normal.
And we can't, there's, we cannot do it on the same Super Tuesday, like, so that.
You have to send it to the townspeople.
And I I would rather send that to the townspeople than this, because like honestly, I think our voter turnout is always low, and I think that maybe that, I think we'd have. More people voicing and.
And that's why the absentee that was going out. Rather than election reminder mail, I'm gonna ever go direct mail, I just authorize that for the meeting. To get people to know that it's two days in a row that you can request absentee, for. So had the general consensus is we wanted to pull this off and not even deal with this right now.
It's mine, you have to come on a public hearing and then.
Well, you have to continue the public hearing and deal with this later, yeah.
So the next one under here that was proposed was to authorize the expense of up to fifty thousand dollars from the assigned fund of balance. Uh, otherwise known as surplus, to the repair or replacement of the disneywood soul parts. Uh, this was a proposal to step in very quick, the parks committee, uh, based upon the expansion of activities in. Uh, especially including the renewed series that went on this summer. So, um, it's. Cost neutral because it comes from surplus. Uh, the budget committee reviewed this and unanimously opposed. Uh, the question recommends to do not approve, um, and it was. Largely, some folk, some folks felt like everybody just threw everything and wanted it all at once. Um, and we'll get into that a little bit later, when we give the budget, but, um. It was. People just didn't wanna fund it, is what it amounted to, and then actually, as Jim was saying, you know, it should come from a capital account, like they should be saving towards it. But the committee then voted recommending reducing their request of ten thousand of a twenty-five hundred.
But the committee then voted recommending reducing their request of ten thousand of twenty-five hundred. We thought it didn't qualify. It doesn't even qualify for capitals. So that's their basis. Um, for denying this, they voted on this and then they might have voted on capital reserves after. No, they voted to reduce capital reserves twenty-five hundred and then relations to voting yes, then relied on capital reserve fund.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, that's kind of where it is. Uh, and the reason for the language, whether it repair or replacing. Was that it wanted to have some more folks involved in the vision for that part, knowing that something needed to be addressed. Um, and was it a gizziro proper? Uh, and the Parks Committee had sentimental concerns for some folks in the community about. A replacement. So um. That's why the language is the way that that language is.
So for me, I very much.
So this is a public hearing.
Okay.
So we should start with the public.
Not today.
Anything for the public, Jimmy, everything is.
I'm here, why not? So, uh, yeah, I think Richard hit it right on the head. For us. Uh, for me in the budget committee, we didn't have enough. I didn't have enough details. Um. I realize we want to grow the park and we want to make that an attraction, a place to be and a place to go, but I want to see. You know, this is a condition of the existing gazebo that's been there for X amount of years and you know, with seventy-five hundred bucks, we can put in a roof on it, we can fix it. This was kind of like we, I thought. Tear down or build a new one or put a tent or put a bandstand or, so I just want to see more of a vision and maybe that exists. I just haven't seen it for the park and then we'll start funding or recommending funding for some of these things, but I want to see that big picture. Before we start throwing money at another issue. So that's it.
Makes sense.
There he has to talk.
All right. So uh, we can close these public hearings. Great. So let's call those closed. And uh, uh, we'll move forward. Uh, the special action along running sentence. Okay, we are supposed to be receiving a forty thousand dollar reference in Somerset County um, that is. Uh, twofold. When it was initially sent, it was intended to help individuals. So then you, I immediately said, huh. What am I doing here? We had nineteen claims, some went from, I burnt extra gas in my generator. Uh, and so that's an issue for three days and then some were total losses. Where literally a story and a half. Uh, uh, were losses. Um.
Do all those people have flood insurance or no?
Uh, I mean, that's not my business. It wasn't included again. Um, so but my bigger issue was how do you equitably distribute funds? Uh, if they didn't have flood insurance, do you reward that by giving them public dollars?
No.
Uh, for the folks that. Maybe did have insurance, but like had their house total low. Hmm, even if you give them all the twenty thousand dollars, it's really a drop in the bucket. Uh, so when I asked for guidance on how the county expected municipalities to administer this, they sent me a ton of files and photos. Some of them were really interesting. Uh, but then they also said that we could use our E M A related expenses and future disaster relief. And to me, that's the greatest public good for the money. If you want to distribute it amongst individuals for their relief, then I would send the money back to Somerset County. Um, but if you want to use it for total public good, sheltering, things like that, like we've, we've been talking about. I think that's a wise use of those funds and I would recommend that you would accept the twenty thousand dollars deposited into the emergency management account. For future disaster related.
And I would say so moved.
Yeah, she has a motion to say it. Uh, any further discussion on that?
What other things does the emergency whatever can fund?
So emergency management is anything related to emergency management. So I'm the emergency management director. It's, I mean, honestly, Todd and I have had an initial discussion about what were the needs for us as E M A director, fire chief. He didn't like it, but like a rescue chief, a lot of what they responded to was. Related in that way and where are our gaps? And honestly, one of our biggest gaps was my inability to coexist in this space. Uh, when my utilities were down here, internet, telephones is where, but it worked the other way around too. And I've got color in this space. They don't. So um. Even as rare as it is, I think there's other opportunities there. So there's, there's things like that. We've got like the shelter. In the sheltering expenses, I've got the costs already. Um. And then we're talking about pulling together the proposal and brushed over at the last meeting and I'm going to brush over it again right now. But. I want to get different folks from different perspectives involved. So Laura Pena was one because she was. Very well working through her sort of experience with school. Carrie was another one, Carrie Everett. She was the boots in the ground for the shelter. Uh, and staffed that up and it may be that we need to use some of this money to create a local mitigation plan. And we talked about that last meeting in terms of what the triggers are that we can do locally. And what can, what then do we need to call in the county, call in the red cross and things like that? I can tell you right now. The folks that I've talked to were thinking twenty-five is the reasonable threshold. When you hit twenty people that need to be housed. That's when you make the phone call and twenty-five would be our capacity to do that. And it would be restricted to more people. We're not looking to run a charity here. And if we were, then we would need to reach out and seek outside funding. But um, really, really thoughtful conversation about where we are, what we need. Um, and, and then there were discussions about burner phones and things like that. Is that productive? Um, it could be something where we pay our text service for the next five years or ten years or whatever. Um, different opportunities there.
I think, I think those are all things that are really worth us in funding. My hunch is that this is intended more for like individuals for like relief from what happened. So I'd be more interested in finding out like, I mean, even if we took those nineteen claims, that's over a thousand for each person. It sounds like some people. It was minor things. I would like fund the minor things and then these people who had big like catastrophic things. Even if it's just a thousand dollars, like that's a few nights in a hotel, that's some new clothes, like that's something. Coming from the town saying, hey, like we're sorry you went through this. So that would be my preference. Even though I, I do believe all those things that were in conversation about our work funding as well.
That is where I was initially. Uh, when we went over this, I was really concerned with not going back to the individuals. Because it felt like that was the intent. Uh. When you get into the nitty gritty of it, uh. Uh, it's, do you just, everybody gets a thousand regardless? Well, how do you start saying, well, you don't have insurance? So I'm going to give you five thousand, but you had insurance, you know? And so it's like Richard said, I'm not. And God, please forgive me. I'm not going to reward you for not having insurance.
Even twenty thousand isn't enough to bail anyone out of, you know, yeah. Okay, so at the end of the day, it's a courtesy of saying, hey, that was really crappy what happened. We have some funds and we want to support you. It's, so whether they had insurance or not, I, I don't think that's up to us. Again, I would look at, you had. A hundred dollars more fuel, here you go. And then figure out these people who had big catastrophic things. How much do we have left to distribute among them and say, sorry, I know this is, doesn't touch your problem, but here's something. And it, it makes me think back to like stimulus bills that like, that wasn't a whole lot of money for some of us, but it was life changing for some people. And I feel like a little, little something from the town is like cool rather than, and again, I do think all those other things are worth funding. But if we're being nudged to like personally put money in pockets of our residents who were affected, then. I'm in favor of doing that.
My only thing is I think that lots of people were affected. They just didn't call it in like, so it's like, you know, for some, I mean, like for someone kind of get it. I got a couple more gallons of gas. Like, I mean, we all had that. Like, we're moving stuff, but we didn't call it in. You know, for me, I feel like it's way too subjective and like what one person has this and someone has like ten thousand like. It, we're getting into, well, why did we make the decision for this person? And we're going to go through like the nineteen people. I just, I feel like it's too gray, too muddy, and there's too much room for, well, why did they get that? I only got this. Why are you assuming that their stuff is worth more than money?
I find that if you move all this, you would have two hundred.
Yes, yep. And I keep on the river and see forty-two hundred of flood insurance. I didn't know about it.
I'm happy if someone wants to make a motion, but that, that's where I stand. So.
It is tough. It is tough. I almost had a horse bar and hit my house in the wind, but I didn't call it in.
Exactly, like.
But you don't want to count fucking people that did, you know, make a legitimate claim that they tried to recover some funds.
Cause that's the process. Now you have money, so you would, you'd have to go and literally all nineteen like. You can, and you should think what you want.
And you're saying it doesn't even tell you if they had insurance.
I have photos of most. Some of them were when some, I mean, I got one that was. The only property that did in the butter river and they were claiming the fuel degrees. Uh, but then I had, you know. Right, my house, I had water for days.
But I didn't, yeah, no.
So there's.
Do people still put in claims?
God, yes, but there's nothing to adjust the amount of money that.
I'm just saying, go ahead, put in a claim like. These are people who ask for help and we can buy costs or we can.
So you get nine, ten folks, three of those claims are from one individual. And that one individual is going to be, is going to be entitled to assistance from USDA. And they're going to be entitled, they're all entitled to assistance from FEMA. The problem is that FEMA money is probably a year for individuals. You know, we're going to be nine to ten months to get it as a municipality. Individuals will be a year old. And I understand what you're getting at. But from a administration perspective. If you want to keep that money for individuals, then I would recommend sending it back to the county and let other municipality be subject to the headache of discrimination and appeal. Because.
Yeah, no, it's only.
Is, is there any prob, there's, there's no holdup if we don't act on this, this meeting? And can those files be made available to Kelsey? If she would like to see it, I don't.
Why me?
Well, if you want to see them. It's very exciting. So in this meeting.
Right, but we haven't. I mean, when people apply, usually there's some sort of checks and balances to. You know what I mean? That's, that's, that's my. I, and I'm not saying people would do that, but I am saying there is that level of thing where people will throw in a claim just to say. I'm going to get whatever I can get, even though they may not have even had the loss that they're claiming they had. Uh, there's just no checks and.
I'm saying you're letting bad apples spoil the bunch and we're gonna fight these people trying to take a risk of it and I don't know that. And I, I'm not the one to say that someone's doing that and I don't think any of us are really. There are people who are really in need and we could give them money right now. So. That's last I'm gonna say.
Can we accept this and then? Can those files be made available? Can they be sent out to the board? So we can look at that.
Sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest with you. Like, I don't, you can send me seventeen files and I'm not going to change them. I do not want to put us in a spot where we have to decide. Based on what you sent me a picture, I think you get fifteen dollars, you get fifteen hundred, you get twenty-five. No, that's not our. No, it is a nightmare on every front for us to.
At the last, talked about at the last meeting for the groups that are asking for money. I think we're on the same.
Yeah.
Need and. That's tough.
It is, it's a dicey road, but you hate to think that you're not giving money to somebody that actually.
But it is like if they, like if they lost things, they didn't have stuff like in the future, they want to comment.
And David's gonna find out when we went down a Walmart by a very flat screen to the, and he's gonna be. He can heat that frigging window. I, that's my.
Just, just a thought, did, did the town solicit and say? Send us your bills because we might be able to help you. Was that the message? Or I don't know how this was proposed and now we're not going to help them. I guess that's my.
I think it was on the news.
Okay. We shared a link that came. You've heard the county banter lately. The county's ineffective, but, but we got some things from other agencies and we shared that if you had claims, report it to them. It could be food regarding the snap benefits that they're just replenished both actually. Uh, but then you could report other damages. Nineteen individual claims, some of them were by same individual.
Right.
So we solicited the public to submit.
But they did not, that was for FEMA. Okay. This is the county administrator of Somerset County blowing their money from the county.
Right.
So that they look good as they begin their budget cycle. Say, well, we gave you twenty thousand ball.
Right.
And it was so, and I went back and looked at the minutes and it wasn't this specific. It was to provide a local relief.
Yeah.
Um, but I can tell you like we have a salvation army filter book here and I had. Three people. Three households that said, you know, we could really use some help with food and depending upon what, I usually ask how much to feed. And. My alarm goes fifty or seventy-five for our household, which is not unreasonable.
My only thing is if, if we solicited the public, we did not, to submit claims because we have this money. Then there's an obligation to go there. If that's not the case, then.
We'll see that we do that for heathens.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Thank you.
So can we accept it and then choose how to spend it at our next meeting?
Yeah, sure.
That's not a problem. And can those files be made available or sent to everybody? Do you even open them or not? That's your choice. Uh, but can those. Nineteen claims be sent to the board and you throw them or not? And then we'll just, we'll accept it now and then we'll decide how we'll spend it. At our next meeting. Whether we keep it all and spend it on that or, uh, Todd.
Something will probably be here next. I don't. I would advise against this board trying to be. Deciders and choosers and winners and losers.
Yeah.
But yeah, so I think Richard hit the nail on the head and he said, where can you? This board represents the entire town, the entire tax base. The entire group of residents of North Carolina. And in theory, at least equally. So where can the money be put? To the best, I think Richard's words were, greatest public good. And that's preparing for next time. Is more likely instead of picking winners and losers. I, I, I appreciate the nineteen claims. I understand there's probably some real loss there. There may be some of that. How do we decide? Maybe you, each one of those claims could be a hundred pages of information. I don't tell you the truth necessarily, but how are we going to pick winners and losers?
And how do we make objectives?
I know, imposing your own personal values, views of people, that's what you see. I, I, yeah, I, I totally see. I, I just. I, 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 I get what you're saying. That's where I was. I was.
I love your compassion and empathy like I, I do and like I admire that so much. For me, like just.
But again, we.
Too much of a crap shoot for that one.
Beautiful house and then choose to spend it exactly how we would. Uh. Whether we go with the. Yeah, emergency management side of it, or we do.
Cause I don't want to. Say, oh, we're gonna look at them and then decide and be like, and then what? We decide now? We're gonna spend it on something else.
It's like, I think that we, whether we see like, oh, got rank. Like sad like.
Like, yeah, like see that the benefit of tabling the allocation. Will allow you to see the content of the material. They're expecting me or you to make a decision based on.
Right.
And it makes it very, very difficult. Man, you see the pictures. There were, there are some folks that submitted, they, you know, sent a drone up in the air, took aerial shots of their property. Um, some people didn't submit pictures at all. This, I think it would give you a better idea of understanding as to what information we're trying to base this on.
Yes.
And do it at what?
Yeah.
And, and then is it going to be means based? Is it going to be pretty around home?
Does it have to be based on their claims?
So then we would just buy it evidently.
Right, right. Well, cause that's, that's what we've been playing after every, when you say, okay, everything is kind of on par. Everybody gets a thousand bucks, you know?
Or you could take half of it and everybody gets five hundred bucks and we use the other half.
Yes, yeah. It's not nothing. It's not everything you filed for, but it's at least this board taking time to review the nineteen claims to say, you know what? No, we're not done. You know, these are all kind of bogus.
But nineteen, like it wasn't nineteen people though. It was just nineteen claims. Yeah. So I mean, like if we did it that way, then some person who put in. Four of them, now they get four times what someone who actually had full house damage, but they just did one thing. That's what I mean. Like it's getting.
Well, good, but you had to review the information. Right now, we haven't reviewed the information. We're only going off what Richard has said, that it's hard to decide. If we can take his word or not, I find the best way to verify his word is for us to at least take kind of look at the nineteen claims you can or not. And then we decide for our next meeting. I'm comfortable accepting.
My concern is I am not going to be at the next meeting.
No matter whether it goes to the nineteen claims.
Seventy-nine.
Or whether it goes to our emergency management stuff. So I think we'll be, we'll use it regardless of the other.
Not too late.
But there may be.
Go ahead. You couldn't, you, you couldn't.
Oh, that's. You can, I mean, my farm was flooded. I lost four days worth of work. I, you know. Yeah, I mean, you can, I, yeah, I can.
It's there, right? And it's, uh.
I just have time to sit and watch the news now.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Are we comfortable with, does everybody want, I, I would like to lay eyes on nineteen.
Right, because the board wishes me to ask for an update from E M A to see if there are any additional claims to last.
I, I think we're just wasting time to kick this down. I think we're trying to make it feel nice and like put it in a boat and make everyone feel happy and fuzzy about it. We're gonna come to the same thing. I just think. It's it. There were emergency things that we wanted to purchase. There were emergency things that we wanted to purchase so that we're, we're in that spot again, we can. Fund those things and now we just approved like funding for the fire, right, because there was supposed to be other funding for this and.
Like technically a hundred and sixty thousand dollars left that can be used for that same stuff. But I can't give people money out of the American Rescue Plan money, I can buy signs and cards. But.
Yeah.
You, you could actually give that to me.
We do in general assistance.
Yep.
Dividations and requirements on this, if you wanna reverse it.
I would love to be doing this with stipulation requirements.
Back at Kelsey's thing, I, I, it was given. Based on those claims, so I think at least we can do is review the claims.
Motion will enable it's the second is D M market.
So there's a motion and a second to.
Allocate them to the emergency management against future disaster related claims.
Okay.
But when do we have to accept this by?
We, we don't have to, have to accept it at all.
So what, we can accept it next year, that's what I'm saying, like what do they need an answer by?
Well, probably until the check goes void and then I have to ask for reissue it, I know the check's coming tomorrow.
And what happens with the money if we don't accept it?
Then it's gonna go back to the county.
And these, these claims went to the county?
Well, those claims went to FEMA and NEMA. Federal and state emergency management. And. Then they came out from these nineteen initial claims, then FEMA representatives came out and chicken picked. To determine, that's when they found out, well, this piece over here, which is at least three of the claims, all on the same property with the same owner. Three individual claims contributed to the nineteen, we're gonna be eligible for. It's fine, so it's eligible for USDA funding and for FEMA, but FEMA is gonna cover it again, isn't it? Yeah, and one of them, one of the points is lost hay.
What, I had a tree fall on my hay.
So anyway, but those are the kind of things that.
By the clients.
I'm telling you, there are some that you really wanna just get money to and then there's some that you don't want to, but then you don't.
We're not insurance like.
But how the claims came from us?
So when the county sent me this email, they said they were sending the county a dollar twenty thousand dollars, I said. How am I supposed to equitable to distribute this money to individuals? And to who, and they said that it was based on the number of claims in a community.
Okay.
So they're targeting. Fairfield, it's going to the Lord's well, bigger towns on the river, so thank you, but how am I again, am I supposed to distribute this money accurately?
There's a lot of people that had no idea they could submit a claim.
If, yes, and it's, it puts us on, it's kind of a loaded situation.
So the super claim is now in our.
It has nothing to do with the town except for the, the way that they calculated the money and how it was distributed to towns was based upon the number of claims. That they had received.
Not the severity or expense of the claims.
So one governmental body making a trivial allocation.
Who, who, the claim was made to FEMA?
NEMA. Up to FEMA, then then forwards it down to county. Everything goes through NEMA, so the state first, and then they go up and they go down. It goes up to FEMA and down.
Now it's at the county, the claims.
It's all three.
If you have someone money, you think, oh, we saw your claim, like here's a hundred dollars. Does that take care of their claim or is their claim still with the county?
No, this is like what they would see is, uh. Because that's how they awarded, what they, they awarded us our allocation of funds based upon these claims. So I said, well, how many claims do we have? They didn't even tell me that, this is the complication that I got that announced it. There's nothing in here.
So somebody could have put this claim in. They could have filed with their insurance as well, their insurance could be taking care of everything. But because they did that.
Right.
Submitted something through there.
So their claims are still hopefully going to get addressed.
Well, they are, I mean FEMA has been to a large number of these properties. Uh, but. It's not that they're guaranteed for funding, there are certain things that won't be eligible. I mean, if they determined that your, your borrowing acts are valuable for treatment for it, well, they're not gonna, and you might not get replacement value either. But you have to file with your insurance and whatever the insurance doesn't cover, then they'll help you. And there is a personal responsibility level, just as there is with the town.
It's tough, right, it's on the hook, I, I just. That, that would be good out there, this money, uh.
We're not like the only hope, like this is just something that was kinda thrown in extra, like it was.
So here, here's. Some gas cards, even if it's like, well, I use a little bit more gas, but here you go, yeah, right, it's.
FEMA will do that, it's like people who are actually qualified to. You know, see what the actual damage was, what the financial like assessment of that is, like, they're doing that, so that's, we don't know how to do that, like, I'm just gonna tell you like. All right, Dylan's gonna charge you more for hey now than he did then, and that's what you lost and that, like, we're not gonna do.
Split it up evenly.
It's super messy.
It is, it is super messy.
Yeah.
It is.
Definitely a pile of poop, we're not gonna come out.
Uh, there is a motion on table, uh, and a second to. Sell awarded to, to earmark it for emergency management. So with no further discussion on that.
Meaning the. Future.
But yeah, that's right, they're, they're accepting. Uh, right. So with that, we would be voting to accept this money and earmark it for. Those purchases. Okay, so all of those are favored.
And we're gonna talk about those purchases?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, we, we, well, yeah, yeah, it would just be, you're gonna differentiate.
Yeah.
When I get a bit of all together, details, details.
So when you say that purchase for, still possibly for the people as well.
Right, yeah. Motion, I would know, I can't add that, I would like to.
But again, just to take it and we'll spend it for.
Yes, that is the motion of the team. With no other clarification, and technically we're voting on it, we have two voting for it, so, uh. And I'm, right, I'm. Not for it, so, right, uh, so all for it, so yes, votes on that. It's two opposed, that's. Where are you?
I guess I'm still confused, so we're, this is basically just to accept the money.
This is to accept the money and earmark it for future purchases. Of emergency management, opposed, okay, so the motion fails. Uh, so we'll need some type of agreement, either we accept it with no earmarks right now and discuss it at our next meeting. Or we do, or we just hold on the whole today.
I like the accept it and. Decide next meeting. Where the money's gonna go and what we're gonna do with it, if we're allowed to do that.
Uh, that's more than fine, yes.
Accept grant.
Bam, okay, so there's a motion and a second to accept it. All those are favor. Both.
I'm like bouncing my face off a wall.
A little, yes, but still.
But they're not saying they're using it for their thing, we're just accepting.
And then you all, you know, the files, review them or don't, that's at your discretion, but both will be set. Moving forward.
Awesome.
Weird and invasive.
How are you gonna get someone feel that will give some money without knowing? Talk about this next. Thanks, me.
Okay, keep going, uh, uh, let's see, uh, moving forward here.
And the motion will, it would be in order to approve and sign cemetery quick claim deed releasing the southern half block two sixty seven Sunset, your cemetery to Keith Florida.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? This is in the scene, none of those are favor. That's everybody.
Okay, so I hope you didn't deal with our red pole, it's a long one, if we imply that red pole. Is a warrant. Oh, no, it's about the workbook, and underneath about the workbook is a warrant. So we're gonna work inside by side to get through this hopefully. Uh, but pretty much, what I'd like to start with is to go over what the budget committee has. Voted on, uh, and hopefully the last of their second commission, right, for that meeting for this budget cycle. If there's any big changes to say they may wanna recommit. But here's where we are, uh, and you can actually see it, and this will be public, this is my markup here for you, uh, it administers. Uh, like total picture, the, the budget committee reduced operating budget, uh, you know, by about twenty grand. That's forty five hundred from admin, four thousand from rec. Thirteen eighty from parks, twenty two oh six from library, two thousand from philanthropy, twelve thousand five hundred from.
Capital research.
Capital research, thank you. Uh, in addition to that, they also asked to use an additional fifty thousand dollars surplus. To offset taxation, which results in a local municipal tax decrease of a little over eight percent. So that's. Total picture here, that's difference between your proposed budget, your recommended budget and the budget committee, and so what I'd like to do is. Go through the. Changes real quick in your deck by department. If those Jim is on the budget committee is just a standard member.
Yep.
And so I'm sure he would be willing to chime in on either of those in case I had his property sent. Uh, but then once we go through these changes, give me these questions, pivots, whatnot, we can do that, and then I'd like to go through the process. Of, uh, approving and making recommendations for each warrant article related to money. And I've also put an in mass mode into taking care of all of the other articles that are administrated. So in administration, um, you can see there's all, there's starts of equipment maintenance and repair. Uh, that was a budget ask of two thousand, they reduced that by a thousand to a thousand. Building maintenance repair was three thousand, they recommend reducing it by fifteen hundred, general terms that was based upon previous year's spend. Um, I don't have those exact numbers, which is why they sell out, and I didn't really wanna pivot and move away after I do all of these sheets. But that was the reason behind that reduction. And then on the second page of the admin budget, the newsletter expense was reduced to ten thousand, uh, and that was, in essence, because the budget's gonna be approved. Uh, not till March, and so Q one edition won't go out. Uh, so that'll represent the savings, uh, that would then be inserted back in next year if it was a successful proposal. So that's the difference on administration, accurate. Fine, thanks, we're gonna move on to recreation group where there's a reduction, uh, in that by four thousand. Uh, and I don't wanna say it's per year. But in essence, it kinda is, I get it, all part of the budget committee's calls to align with these other motions. Um, and that was the premise of the motion made and. Excepted by the committee. Was to reduce, uh, facility maintenance and repair to forty eight hundred, if we put the rents to thirty six hundred. So what that did was it had the requested, this is the digest fee number fourteen, part of the fourteen, issued in the quarter. It had the requested increases for those two categories. Those two categories were larger increases than other lines, the equipment rental, uh, facility maintenance and repair line, that was proposed to go to seventy nine hundred. Uh, that was intended to fund a turf maintenance plan. Uh, from contractor, Sports Field was the one that provided us with the quote for a long term, uh, field maintenance, uh, plan. And so anyway, uh, it wasn't that they weren't supportive of it. It was that the committee necessarily thought you really gotta start picking priorities and they felt like, again, everything was just thrown at them. Um, all at once with that request, so.
Can you ask questions at, at all at this point, like?
Just in a second, let me get through the second one real quick, so that was the money requested from the rec committee. That was seventy nine hundred and the committee said, eh, we're fine with giving it half of that requested increase. The second was equipment rental and the. Majority of that increase in your equipment rental from the two thousand forty five hundred was that two thousand dollars. That the rec committee asked for to fund the rental, uh, of, uh, lights. For the month of October for soccer fields as a trial run. Uh, to see, you know, if it helped, if it was an attraction and things like that, that was a proposal where we had already had two lights donated. And there were four that we would then have to rent from another contractor, so they again recommended approximately having that increase. Um, that was requested by the committee, so that went out to the ballpark just to make it fit into the spreadsheet. As best that I could represent the comments that made it from.
Is that unanimous or did we split the vote on one of those? I thought we split.
It's parks that got messy.
Yeah, I did, I remember. Even bigger than porta potties.
Uh, the rec committee actually is moved four to two.
Yeah.
And, and I believe the two that were opposed actually are favorable to fall.
I think so, I can't remember. All the parks is.
Yeah, did you have?
Yeah, for the recs one, so, issue I'm having with like the recommendation here is that. For both of the proposed items here that we initially set our budget for, when they slash it. It's not just some slashing, it's cutting that ability to do that, so you cannot do the turf maintenance for that and you cannot do like the lights, so we're basically. Might as well give them zero dollars based on their budget because this amount of money that they're recommending won't cover what they're asking for, so. I think it comes on us, do we just say no, or let them do it?
So what's the, the difficult thing is we use these strategies as a tool to budget, so you know where I'm coming up with my number. But I think the message it came to the committee was pick one or the other. Because you don't have to spend forty five hundred or thirty six hundred dollars on equipment rental, you can reallocate a portion of those funds, not reallocate it. You could just spend it somewhere else on a different line of the budget, we're not stuck to the lines, although we track by the lines. So that you can get a clearer picture of how I develop my budget and how you can redo it. And other budget committee goes there, so that's what I say, if I tried to do the best I could to represent what the committee was saying. These lines don't necessarily say pick one or the other. But generally by the majority.
I think the way that we looked at it was, these are line item budgets. A lot of times annually, a lot of this money or a percentage of this money doesn't get spent. And if that's a real priority for parks. And they wanna try to get a savings in another area, then go seizure field or go get another porta potty, it's not a line item budget, but. We're just looking at what they spent the previous year, what was unspent the previous year, you know, we wanna kinda try to. Put a hold on our increased spending as much as we can as we move forward, so.
Man, I was also at a meeting and there was a comment about. Not so much the ongoing turf maintenance, cause that's, that's, that's blocking the budget. But the lighting of a field for a one month trial might be a really good tip expense. Uh, because it's a one time thing, it's a trial, you know, bringing a bunch of people to town, et cetera, et cetera. And I think the budget committee was kind of in favor of that idea to do it. I, I, I can't speak for the committee, but.
No.
That was totally the.
Right.
Yes.
It's not, it's like you mentioned, so something gets chopped, you just have to.
That, the figure for the turf repair.
Uh, so I had a reputable, knowledgeable individual reach out to, uh, another vendor to get a, a third party neutral call. And LeDon Lynch got it, cause he's on the rec committee and he went to Sports Field, so it's, it's pretty much.
He's gonna win a break of rice, you know?
If we accepted what the, or also recommended what the budget committee recommended as far as. The recreation, could we still afford? The field?
So it's tough, like Richard said, so as a whole number, yes, as a line item, no.
So they decided not to do the lights, they can.
The goal's not, right, sorry, the goal is not to say it tonight, no longer the budget committee. You and that want to, unless you're really, really, really passionate about moving that number. You wanna stick with what you sat with and.
Give the option.
Typically, the higher number appears on the warrant. But both recommendations will appear on the warrant, so if you want to make a recommendation, it's different, we're not even gonna call them, then I, we can adjust that. The process where you can vote against your recommendation because you support the budget committee, but the goal of the process. Uh, is not for you aligning with that, in fact, it would be better for the process if you don't.
Longest time, it was always the same number, so I, I, I appreciate what you guys have done, I, I mean, I like particular line items, both, but that's regardless. It's, you, you, I feel you're doing your job, let's vote for articles four through forty nine.
That is ridiculous when you're spending three million bucks.
Is there any little questions on rec? That's kind of the reason, but I just wanna give you guys an idea as to why. Because you're gonna get all these numbers pulled out and then they're gonna ask for contingency money between the months that we discussed. And that's gonna require you guys moving your number up or say, no, we're not doing it, so that's why I'm going through this with you guys right now. Next one's parks, park was one of the most difficult, but this except for my own administrative. Uh, it was a difficult conversation. Uh, it was a difficult conversation, uh. But we had. Folks, no, well, no, 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 folks felt it was personalized. Um, and it was really, it meant really, really low and it came together with rec and a lot of the sentiment, I heard comments from more than one member, we spent too much on kids. We gotta pay for the school and then we do the rec and we do the parks and when does it stop? Uh, there was a motion, it was a failed motion, but it was closed. On the table for the parks, uh, to reduce their budget to last year's budget and then we'll give them a little bit more. So twelve thousand dollars. That cut a lot of folks deep. Even members of, members of the committee or members of the committee were kind of going.
Well, didn't get any support.
So, well, it did, it did, right? Uh, through a process of negotiation. The budget committee settled on twenty-nine thousand. And candidly, it was a failed motion. We did not have the votes to give the twenty-nine thousand. Three people thought it was a decent meet in the middle, three people thought it was too much. It would have been a failed vote and we would have kept getting failed votes. So sidestep traditional rule, it's a advisory board, it's going to be listed in the book. Uh, if there's no objection by this board, budget committee recommends twenty-nine thousand dollars three to three. If that is an issue to this board, then we will have to recommit the budget committee because I can get an odd number for it. But it was a very difficult conversation. The reason for the cut here under equipment rental was that parks committee and I budgeted for three porta potties at Ashley Park, uh, and they said, hey, start with two. And so that's all of this does to their operating budget. With the parks.
The other thing we looked at there was we'd combine Ashley Lane with all the other parks. And a few members wanted to know within the future, we could separate that to see what our actual cost was for Ashley Lane as it grows to that three hundred thousand plus and keeps growing. But that was, I don't know if I'm in favor of that or not, logistically, it's probably a nightmare, but be interesting just to see where that split is.
So, and, um, I that conversation, I just set out because that conversation was going a little long enough, but it was a stale line on the budget sheet. From that, I think when Warren was doing work down there and they were allocating money to it. And so it was like at that point in time, like it really shouldn't have been on there at all, because then I'm into all of my products, that's how I didn't break it out. And electricity and plumbing, it's not, it's all that fun stuff. But I deleted that line for the book that sends the message that we're not investing in Ashley Lane and that's anything but the roots, um. So the library, the library had a majority, uh, on the budget committee. They went, uh, the budget committee voted, uh, to accept the department's request, um, at the reduced forty-nine oh seventy-three.
What was the, I can't remember what that.
It was the difference in wages for the library.
Well, that's right, coming in after hour before hours and I think the conversation was the board, the library representative had volunteered their hours for the last fifty-five years. And they didn't see what they couldn't continue into the future. So I get it, but.
Yeah, so, right, and from the administrative perspective, we can't expect to be open at kind of clock and then people show up. And we can't expect to open until two or six, do the same and have in contact with the town and everything else. Anyway. Um, I, I made it very clear, the budget committee, that's already started, I am compensating the library employees for the time spent. And I don't expect that she's going to show up before fifteen minutes before shift. Uh, and if we have to keep people out because they're lingering, then that's what we're going to do to not extend beyond the fifteen minutes. It's not a guarantee. So, uh, your local philanthropy. That is unchanged from the previous discussion with the budget committees, that's they're recommending a reduction at six thousand. Uh, that number in the organization request column continues to go up, it's now up to eighty-six hundred, almost eighty-seven hundred dollars in organizational requests. Um, but their process there was aligned and able to request that we received at the time of the review.
And I think to further, I like Lindsay's thought from our last meeting. If we're not soliciting those people to submit requests, then eliminate that out of the budget and then we deal with it from either surplus or tips as we move forward. Need by need basis, but let's not solicit for and then not issue it. Thank you.
And then the last was capital reserves and the reductions there, uh. The, the bright one is the ten thousand dollars requested by parks. Uh, that was reduced to twenty-five hundred dollars in the budget committee. And then the other one, the tax redow account, uh, which I have recommended an increase in twenty-five thousand dollars with a redow on the horizon. Uh, and the recommendation of the budget committee was to reduce that by five thousand. So. Any questions on budget committee?
I mean, I don't, I don't want to change any of the words based on there, to be honest with you. Like the capital reserve, especially one of the park, like I, and I think don't agree with that reduction, they're not a free month, they need to keep doing things there, um.
So now we're going to go on to hopefully accept motions as I read them to you and then we can discuss them as they are rollable. So I try to make this easy. We're going to move to the warrant document. The warrant document on the left side of each page has lines like edit lines, that's what we're really going to be zeroing in on today. So the motion here that I'd like to move from my side of the board, it places to warrant administrative town meeting articles, draft articles one, four, five, and twenty-seven through forty-two. So those are all baseline articles, but there are a couple that we need to just hit on real quick. In terms of changes versus previous year, I don't think that's going to change it, but you might. Article thirty-three. The maximum incorporate, there's a lot of state credit rates, which it will always presumably, that's the movement taxes has increased from eight to eight and a half percent. That's article thirty-three and article thirty-four states that, it says you must pay four points different. So that then leaves a baited tax, prepaid debated taxes at four and a half percent. That acceptable?
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, the next one is article thirty-five. And this is rewritten, uh, by council, um. As the property, as the process for disposing of tax buyer property under the new law that came from Henepin, the whatever, somebody, the Henepin County out in uh, Minnesota, which takes proceeds from tax buyer property sales and returns them to the owner. After my new administrative costs. So the days of bid excess are long gone. It's going to cost us money to process these at this point in time. We're going to be able to bill, you know, the newspaper, uh, the newspaper ad and yada yada, but it's, you're not going to be covered, it's my time.
Cover your time.
It will, but it's not going to, it, there will be an amount that will support that. But you're not going to cover it in the way that you had your past.
Right, yeah.
And it will also require us to issue an RFP, request for proposals for the services of a licensed Realtor. Uh, even that post Realtor at that point in time, because folks that owns are then tax acquired if they're not redeemed. And, and this is going to be the same for sewer, even though statute doesn't call, it doesn't address sewer, we need to handle the same way or we're going to get a full suffrage report, right, on that. So if they want, they just walk away from it. And they don't want it anymore, they can say, nah, I want you to use the Realtor and Realtor's got to go get their market value and all of the proceeds gone. They can also ask for us to dispose of it under the old process. Unlikely.
Yeah.
But that with this article self spells out here, uh, and it also then includes heirs, devices, personal representatives, um. In which we didn't before, it was always a part of the property that was taken. So there were a handful of different methods, but I tried to stick with what was closest to what we had, which was offer redemption. And then move to the process. So I've still got the redemption here that extends. Is that okay?
It has to be.
Those are the only substantive changes to those administrative articles, one, four, five, and twenty-seven, two, four, two. Very nice. So it's more than a second to warrant the articles.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that means we're making no changes to the budget, correct?
No, we're going to do by the now.
Yep, this is, that's just what the, the part of pieces we just read. The changes, acknowledging and saying we're okay with them, so.
So all was in favor?
Uh, the next one would be to, uh, warrant draft article number forty-three. That's the ordinance that we've, uh, changed to finally get them officially staggered. When it was set, it was two, three-year term, two, two-year term, but one-year term. That was intended to stagger it out of the gate, but the language didn't exist for that. So this would then transform all the three-year terms. Uh, I had a discussion back, Lindsay, last week, uh, about this. I think it's a decent solution, maybe, to get people into three-year terms. But I think there's going to be a long conversation in the next two or three years about making this an appointed board. People are just so disinterested, I'm starting on this committee, it candidly is headaches and moral. So, uh, but if we owe it to the people to try the process.
Alright, so I'll move that we approve article forty-three as written.
Second motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody.
Okay, now we're going to move into budget. And that would be, uh, a motion to warrant draft article six, the industry. Well, I say so, it's going to be as stated, the forfeit one seven hundred, which is, that was your previous right of naming. So, we, we want to warrant the art, if you have any statement amongst any member that you don't like it and you want to dissent, then I need that when we go through each of these budgets. If you don't like the admin budget. If you want to put the admin budget out at that amount, great, if you don't want to recommend it, it will be that instead of, oh, can I just bring it up so we can add that in?
Yeah. We will show on this when the voters see it, like, that the select board was, you know, three to three or three to two or whatever it is, so. So what are you looking for for motions just?
Yes.
So I will do that. At this point, I will move to approve article six as written with a recommendation. With a recommendation.
Motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, what's on the administration button, if we like, if we're, we're approving that amount to appear in front of everybody. Okay, so that is.
Probably do that, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, you know, do you like note?
Article seven, draft article seven is elected officials, the amount there is eighteen thousand one hundred.
Article seven.
Motion on a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody.
Draft article eight, access setting is twenty-six thousand six hundred.
I'm going to accept article three.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Draft article number nine, public safety, uh, presented and recommended at one thirty-one zero ten.
Move to accept article nine as written.
Second, motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Everybody.
Draft article ten, fire, uh, presented and recommended at three eighteen, four twenty-six.
Move to accept article ten as written.
Second, motion a second, any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
See, draft article eleven, public works, uh, stated and recommended seven fifty-three, six seventy-five.
Recommend article eleven as written.
Second, motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Everyone.
Draft article twelve, cemetery, uh, presented and recommended sixty-six fifty.
I'm going to accept article twelve as written.
Motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Draft article thirteen, general assistance presented and recommended at fifty-six hundred.
Move to accept article first as written.
More than a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, give me love, please.
No, it's.
We might get a hiccup there.
That article fourteen, recreation presented and recommended at thirty-two, three twenty-five.
I recommend article fourteen as written for on the select board.
Second motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh. Wait, where are you running on that? Is that everybody? You can be, it's fine.
Yeah, no, I, I think I'm opposed to it.
Okay, okay, so that's four to one.
Draft article fifteen, parks presented and recommended at thirty thousand three eighty.
Move to approve it, article fifteen as written.
Second, motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone.
Draft article seventeen, code enforcement presented and recommended at forty-six thousand one hundred.
Uh, I thought we're on.
Sixteen, sorry, draft article sixteen, library, fifty-one, two eighty, presented and recommended.
Move to accept article sixteen as written.
Seeing motion on a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone.
Draft article seventeen, code enforcement, presented and recommended at forty-six one hundred.
Move to accept article seventeen as written.
Second, motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? So everybody.
Draft article eighteen, presents and recommended at twenty-two hundred.
Move to approve article eighteen as written.
Second, motion a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thirdly.
Draft article nineteen, local philanthropy, presented and recommended at eight thousand.
I will, we accept the article nineteen as written.
Second, motion a second, any discussion?
I don't approve any of the eight thousand, so.
Seeing none, other discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Get it, four to one.
Draft article twenty, summer grounds maintenance presents and recommended at forty-five thousand.
Move to accept article twenty as written.
Second, motion a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? So everybody.
Draft article twenty-one, debt service presented and recommended at ninety-three, four twenty-three.
Move to accept article twenty-eight as written.
Second, motion a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Everybody.
Draft article twenty-two, classified, presented and recommended thirty-one, five thirty-six.
Move to accept article twenty-two as written.
Second, motion a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? So everybody.
Draft article twenty-three, contingency presented and recommended at ten thousand.
I'm move to accept article twenty-three as written.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
So everybody. Draft article twenty-four, capital reserves presented and recommended by the select board at one million sixty thousand dollars.
Great. This, these are our capital. Okay, so we have, okay, I, so I moved that we accept article twenty-four as written, you said? I just, uh. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're showing that we're accepting this and that with the.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, we.
Yeah, our original one.
Exactly, with the higher.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so one million forty thousand. For the select board, warranted and recommended.
Yes, there's a.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody.
Draft article twenty-five, anticipated revenues presented and recommended at two million three hundred seventy thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Right there, uh, article twenty-five as written.
Second. Uh, motion a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? So everybody.
Draft article twenty-six, undersigned fund balance surplus.
Move to keep article twenty-six as written in our original amount.
Oh, motion, oh, is there a second?
Second, motion a second? Any discussion?
So for the record, this then gives the budget committee recommendation to utilize additional fifty thousand dollars in undersigned fund balance to offset taxes.
Yes.
Because we would be publishing either our lower amount.
That's correct.
But that's not cutting them off, not allowing it to be taken to vote.
That's correct.
So in order to let the process play through, we would have to recommend.
Down and remove, move again.
And it was just a.
No. The up to was, it's status, up to that amount, it's not guaranteeing you to spend that amount, but we have no idea what the county or municipal of the school budget is going to look like this year. So by exceeding that, giving us a higher amount. You don't have to go to that amount, that's a decision you can make in the future, but you're not handicapping yourself at that lower number. Spend a lower number if you want, but don't handicap yourself and lock yourself to that lower number. That's, that was our. That's, that was our goal.
The discussion at the budget, budget committee was that, and it was also that you're, you're warranting this in January, you're, but you're deciding this in March. And you commit taxes in August, think of the things that you know in August that you don't know now.
Exactly.
Right, you're gonna know what your school budget is, presuming they passed it in the first three rounds. You're gonna know what your county budget is, you're gonna know what things are, and this gives you the flexibility, that was the rest of the discussion.
And you ultimately have the decision to make that in September. Yeah, but not, but not at the lower number.
He would be mine, so I'm assuming the budget committee came up with that number. You came up with this number, I'm guess based on a lot of research and putting time and thought into it, so, I mean, you came up with this number for a reason of five hundred, you didn't come up with five fifty. For me, I feel like you've hit your finger on the pulse with that, like, why did I not cross that?
My reasoning, and I, I don't want to zoom just in on this, but, you know, I looked at revenues and everybody accepted my revenues, no questions asked, right? Uh, well, sorry, we did move the needle on, on the waste management community fees a little bit. Uh, but the five hundred thousand, my goal was to. Look from a budgetary fundamental perspective and say what is reasonable, and I know that the cost of living and pressures are upon everybody. Um, and I don't, I'm not a firm believer in artificially inflating or artificially deflating. Uh, and the board looks pretty similar to what this board looked like last year, but in conversation that was had when we had the up to amount. Uh, the board actually voted not to give the up to amount, and there was an almost coup. Because the board said, no, we're not going to receive, and that would probably be cause last meeting, there were a couple, they said we received a lot of feedback about it. So that's kind of where I'm at, and I think that maybe folks in the budget committee wanted to see flat or down.
It's just not sustainable.
Nothing is.
Yeah.
Nothing that we have here is, and we could talk about organizations leaving or coming back, and we're not going to, because it's not sustainable. We don't like changes to make if things change.
Yeah.
So that doesn't hold my water, uh. I think I indicated this at the last meeting, and I indicated it at the budget committee. Because there was a question about what would the auditor say? And I said, I don't think there's a concern from the auditor, but certainly if you intend to expend an additional hundred fifty thousand over last year. Cut reserves theoretically, and. Yeah, that, it signals a policy shift, it signals that the town is preparing to divest. That we're going to let money go out of our accounts. And, and when you're gonna, municipal taxation's down eight percent. So I think it's a policy, and I think that it needs to be weighed to as that, if you think that the town should have eight million dollars in an account. So that we can ease ourselves off from a terrible day someday, for five or six years. That's one thought, there's another thought that says, why should you have eight million dollars in the bank, send that back to the taxpayers, I think, does that have a medium? Uh, a lot of towns outside don't have what we have in the treasury, but we, most towns also don't have a fiscal note in every audit that talks about. Our inde- our dependence on an individual taxpayer.
Yeah.
So it's difficult for me to balance that.
Yeah.
And.
I think that because there is that dependence, we do have to have a far larger buffer, because. For me personally, I would rather see that type of surplus of money going into increasing our tax base, so that we aren't dependent on one soul on it. I just, I think that artificial or or not, but like, no one should expect taxes going down on a consistent basis with the way that our economy is going right now. I think that we've done a really good job of balancing it and making it so that no one's feeling, you know, a massive increase, but I also think that. We have to have a fairly significant rainy day fund, when we are so dependent on one thing not breaking, and.
These are all valid, really, everything you said is valid. But if we don't publish the amount, this discussion can't. At the end of the day, this discussion needs to have an actual meeting, so whether it's ten voters or seventy voters that show up and say. We either want the eight million dollars in the bank, or, hey, we feel it's a little heavy, and it's time to bleed it off now. I, I don't think it's fair for us to cut your legs off underneath you and say, we're not even gonna publish your amount to let this.
Right.
Happen, I, I, I'd like to, I, you know.
Understand the publishing of the amount.
You can't, so when you, you can't, you can't increase it, you can only decrease it from what's published in the final copy.
Like article twenty six?
That's right, so when we publish that amount, it never go up, it can only go down, so that's. Yeah, yeah, exactly, so when we, that's.
Interesting.
Why we get that set. I would like to keep it the way we have it, but I would want that to be decided at town meeting by the voters, right? And we didn't realize either that that would be capped by your vote, I hadn't really considered that, so. So for me, that's why I wanted to look, I wanted to do some process to play out, and the voters can decide, so. That anybody's wrong here, I think it's just how you do your own personal finances. The motion on the table is draft article twenty six, unassigned fund surplus, in the amount of up to five hundred thousand dollars. Right, so we would have to change that? Uh, if both of them. People agree with your sentiment about putting ex voters, you vote that down, and then you make a new motion to warrant the article. In an amount of up to five hundred fifty thousand, with a recommendation to approve up to five hundred, that maintains the select one.
But gives them the option.
Yeah, okay, so I'm comfortable, I'm, I'm fine either way on this, really, I, I just wanna put that out there, I do. So I'm gonna turn motion, I'm gonna, you don't have a long term, I'll take.
Yes, to.
But we warrant the article at the lower number.
Saying what we originally agreed upon, we are still standing despite.
All right, so we'll have to, okay, so, any discussion on that? So right now, you're voting on publishing it at our original amount, or the lower amount? So.
And does that keep the select board recommends, or what the?
That makes it so.
Sorry, if it gets changed, does it change what select board recommends, or just what?
So if you go right now, it's our recommendation only, that's the only number they're gonna see. They will see the budget committee recommendation. Right, but you do, right, but if the amount is.
Your recommendation will be five.
Even if we put artic, publish article six is five hundred fifty?
That's correct.
Weird.
So. It's all those in favor of going with our original amount and publishing that, so all those four opposed? Okay, so we want a new motion?
I'm not doing that.
The board intends to offer motion to warrant draft article twenty six, unassigned funds surplus. In an amount of up to five hundred fifty thousand dollars with a recommendation would prove up to five hundred thousand. So, okay, there's a moment in that, that's that, any further discussion?
I'm not gonna repeat.
See none, all those in favor? I didn't have a written down score, I'm opposed.
Am I gonna just reset the title key?
No, not at all. Okay, so I'm gonna move one out of order, because I think the consensus is made, and this is going to be a motion to.
Whatever you're going to.
I'm, I'm away from budgets now, yeah, right. You should be done with budgets.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna deal with articles two and three, so article two is that declared right, like, if there's a consensus, so. There was discussion in a previous meeting, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to remove draft article two. Second, motion second. Any further discussion? Uh, we, yeah, we made one shot. Yeah. We must do. Yes, it was, so.
Vote on it, or vote it, or vote.
Right.
Like a vote and mail both.
You can all, if it's you name, it's you name. Yes, so. Anything with controversy, remove it, that's right. Okay, so that's everybody. All right, and then the next one that we're gonna be dealing with is draft article number forty, and that's the. expense of up to fifty thousand dollars from an assigned fund balance surplus for the repair or replacement of the Kizimoto school park. But this is a two parter, um, I, I drafted it, it's two parts in minutes, just because I know that there was some discussion about. Um, wanting to put it to voters, but maybe not supporting it, so. Whether or not the sentiment of the board is still to put it to the voters. Um.
We don't put anything else for anything.
I'm, I'm comfortable, I am comfortable not, I mean, I know, if we devise. And if we choose to do nothing, that's fine, uh. But this, this needs to go to having, you're gonna get surplus. Right, so you're ready to, I think the sentiment behind it was that folks didn't wanna feel bad or saying no. And are people gonna say, no, in a town meeting? Not usually, maybe they will, but by line of. You know, anyway, it's, it's up to you whether or not you, well, if you want to warrant an article, if you want to warrant a secret. Balance article, that's difference.
I just think that it's like, it's a department, just like work is a department, everything else, like when you have buildings, any ability built in anything else, like you. You put that in your budget, you pay for it, and this is like, because. I honestly feel like this was put in here this way because they increased their budget so much, I was like, oh, you can't put it another fifty in, like it. I mean, then why are we putting on the bell, red lights, if those are gonna take, I just, I don't.
We did wreck ball too.
Yeah.
Right, we did that in the same exact fashion as this, we just went to the open floor town meeting, and it was passed with full respect.
Yeah, I haven't even had it looked at to see what a cost to fix, so I, I, it feels hasty.
So the, if you were to replace that, a two year old crisis, about fifty thousand. If you were to elevate it a little bit, and you remain it as it is.
The, the other thing too, I mean, I just, I feel like it. Even hearing there's any sort of sentimentality that's being factored into the reasoning and the money of this, that remains a giant red flag, because these are taxpayers, this is.
I didn't factor in the sentiment, the sentiment factors into the repair or replace language. The budget request is for a replace. And it's up to you, you're just like. Right, or you can just say, no, pull up in the budget, candidly, if you're gonna allow the. Decision of the budget committee's additional fifty thousand dollar from surplus, maybe you say, no, it's not appropriate for us to use any more surplus. Like, it, it is a fundamental policy shift. For the town, to start deeply, we're gonna probably see a reduction in our reserve of a month to a month and a half. Of what we're supposed to have on hand, in that. Strictly because, and this is purely forecast, but it appears to be right, just because we're taking that extra out to offset taxation. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable pulling this all together, and if we devise a plan that we like, I'm more than comfortable. Finally, we can spend the money, yeah, doing it another route versus taking his meetings with an unclear picture, it would be different if we had the. Design, you say, oh, this is what we're. Uh, no, it's, it would secret ballot.
Worse, because then it's even less informed.
And I don't want to have people who something that we don't have to do this. You got a public hearing to discuss it, right?
Right.
Thank you.
So I don't.
So I moved to remove article three altogether.
So there's a motion, second, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, remove it? Yeah.
Did that remove both of them, or, so it only took me two weeks to get you guys removed?
I just saved the page in your town report, that's gonna stay in your like, depending, or if they're removing the first one, or anyone go with it, oh, nice. I thought we had a very intense.
Yeah. That's right.
Uh, so then the next thing that would be in order would be a motion to sign the twenty twenty four town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Any discussion, see none, all those in favor? So everybody. I will have that drafted out and finalized tomorrow, and then I'll call you for signature, so I need to come in off. To, to get it signed, so that I can have signatures, I wanna get ballots open, legal window, thirty days before the election, or before you are next regularly meet. So as soon as I have that. Relax, and put that side. Oh, yes. Uh, and then.
Can someone gee on the school board if their spouse worked for the school? Thank you. Thought that was the answer, but I didn't want that one.
We actually had that in the, one of the last.
Oh, yeah?
I have to move to adjourn. What's that?
I think range, I just think it's kind of old school.
If we got downtown.
People are in range. In the history of the town.
I think I like range too. I, I can't, if I miss the rebuild, I love these, I do, if it was a better picture, I think it would be perfect. When you go into the mailings, you know, to get it all ties together, uh, but, God, that green building is just so bad downtown.
Go buy it.
It's not, it's new.
We look bad at all. Yeah, yeah, I did not.
They was like sixty grand. Motion second to adjourn, any further discussion? What do they want, is that place now?
Uh, what do you guys all take up?
A minute, yes, a minute.
Some of, most of you have seen this, but, and this is not updated, this is.